Okay, that's going. And. Okay, can everybody see the agenda?
Yep.
Okay, Max. It's all you.
Okay, we will move on from the roll call to the, uh, we will dispense with the pledge of allegiance because I don't think we're gonna pull that off with over zoom. Uh, right now I need to approve of the agenda.
This is Jason, motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is Jason, aye.
Nick, aye.
Sheldon, aye.
Max, aye.
And I. Pam, you don't need to vote.
Onto the old business. We have the city building and remodeling.
So Gail and Kurt are both on the call tonight to discuss, um, where we're at. I just wanted to start by telling the city council that the date for petitioning against the bonding has come and gone. That was last week, the fourteenth. And now the city can move forward. Todd Higgin from Ellers has been included in the conversation but could not, uh, join the meeting tonight. Uh, he had two other municipal meetings he had to attend. So I invited Gail and Kurt, um, from Wood Seth since they are our designated engineering company to join, to, uh, move the conversation forward. I guess I will put it in both their conversations unless Max, you have anything else you'd like to add?
Presently Christina, I'd just like to hear how fast we can get moving.
Yeah, right.
Um, this is Kurt, I can, I can speak, uh, somewhat at a high level. I've been down in the weeds on, on this, it's been Steve and, and Gail and you guys working through it, but, um, I know that both Steve and Todd are ready to start moving forward with the, the programming stage. I know there may be certain, uh, things that we can't, uh, do before, uh, maybe a, a work session, uh, with the city, but we can probably, um, certainly move through with some of those elements. Have you guys received a contract from Steve Rose?
Uh, Kurt, I can speak to that, this Christina, no, we have not. The only contract that we've worked on was, um, the preliminary programming that he created for the city.
Okay.
Had a roundabout idea of what our, our budget was so that we could, the city was gonna move forward.
Okay, so, so probably the next step would be, um, for him to prepare both a contract and a schedule for you guys for your regular November meeting. And at that meeting, along with the contract, he'll kind of go through a timeline of events. And especially with a project like this, uh, most important for you guys is to know when you need to be involved. Christine, has there been a discussion, uh, whether there was gonna be a breakout committee on dealing with design questions associated with the building? Or is it just going to be Mike or is this going to be just something that's done at council meetings and work sessions?
Uh, that's a good conversation for the group. Um, I would encourage committees, especially since we've got three different, um, uh, departments that we're working on in order to achieve both these buildings, the remodel and the new one.
Yeah, I think it should be, it not just councils and work sessions, it's going to take a little bit of extra.
And, and that's, and that's best, um, you know, if there can be a, a small committee that then can bring stuff to the council, um, any major decisions. And that's probably something you guys have a little bit of time to work through. Steve can talk about schedule at your November meeting, but probably what you're gonna want is, is maybe those designated committee members established by, by your December meeting.
Do we want, uh, Max, do you wanna discuss that tonight?
Yes, I would. Well, I just wanna get everybody else's, all the, the rest of the council's input on it. Nick, Jason, Sheldon.
Yeah, this is Jason, I definitely agree, uh, we need a council to, uh, now mitigate in between us, so more heads, more engineers, you know, better ideas.
Yeah, exactly, and we can, then that way we can move on forward with it.
I agree, definitely need another council for that, or an extra.
So we'd form a committee of, uh, three of us or so and when the design questions come up, um, also Mike, I want you definitely in on each one of those.
Christina, one thing, um, that's important with the committee is to have less than a quorum on that committee.
Yes.
Um, because almost certainly there will be things that come up on a short notice, you wouldn't be able to publish. Otherwise, you know, the, the more input, the better. So I guess that's my only comments on those committees.
Okay. Max, if I could make a suggestion, um, I would designate, Jace for sure, Mike obviously for cert, uh, either Melissa and Shonda or one of them, myself. And then, uh, well, there's four of you, so I can, we could put one in potentially two if we split it into two committees, one for the liquor and one for the public works. That would be my suggestion.
Well, I would agree that we need, they're two completely different buildings, so yeah, two separate committees would be best.
Yeah, and then just split it and that would work.
So Kurt, let me ask you this, um, provided on a timeline, this is something that's going to take most of the winter to be able to start working on, um, does it matter? I guess it would probably be a better question for Stephen is to how often these committees would need to be meeting?
Yeah, Steve's gonna be better, uh, to do that, and I think there's actually going to be, uh, kind of a variable. There'll be times when significant time will go in between meetings and then there may need to be two or three meetings within a week and a half period.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll visit with Steve about that this week to, to, to not only have a timeline for, for this design process, but also a timeline that shows when he's gonna lean heavily on those committees. So people can better understand that, yeah, January is gonna be a busy month for the committee and, and those kinds of things, so.
Certainly.
That's something for the rest of the council to keep in mind is being able to be free. And can you get away from work, can you get away from school, but you know, whatever it is. Because we will need the full committees.
Max, if may I maybe ask a question of Jason?
Yep.
Jason, I understand, you know, I understand that you're going to be, you know, your, your term is up at the end of this year. Is that something that you would still be interested in helping the city with even though your council position may expire at the end of the year? Would you still wanna be part of that planning process then as a resident, as a citizen?
Um, yeah, I could definitely give up my time for that.
Okay, cuz I know that you've put a lot of, um, effort in your term with public works and public safety. And that's why I wonder if that's something you'd still wanna continue working with so that, you know, your input doesn't stop?
Yeah, most definitely, I'd, I'd be more than happy to help.
Okay, cuz I would suggest you, you be on that public work side for sure.
Okay.
Unless I'm overstepping here.
No, totally fine, um, if, uh, I may actually ask, um, are we gonna do it during the day or during the evening for the public works com- um, committee?
You know, I think we would just have to do whatever works for the whole group. And I understand your, your schedule is very tight, so you know, if it's a small three to four people, uh, person committee, then we should be able to make something work that accommodates your schedule.
Okay, yeah, um, I should be able to, um, work around pretty much anything that I've got. Um, my school fluctuates, especially after the, uh, first of the year, it's gonna be anyways.
Okay. Great. Sorry, Max, go ahead.
As, uh, just to avoid any conflicts of interest, I'm not gonna be sitting on the liquor store committee rebuild. So I would ask that, uh, perhaps Nick, I'm looking directly at you and I'm saying this. If you wouldn't mind sitting in on some of those if, or sitting in on the committee because we're, we're, we're gonna need to divvy this up. I don't know how, I know you work in Bemidji, so I don't know how that's gonna work out for you.
Uh, I should be able to, I got some time saved up where if I had to take time off, I could too, so. But I'd be more than happy to.
That would be great. So it sounds like to me Christina, I, I think everybody would be in agreeance with, uh, setting up two committees.
And obviously I'll work on both of them so that I become a liaison between the council and the committees too.
Okay. Mike, I still want your input on it. Yeah, okay. Um, anything else for Kurt or Gail?
Um, I don't have anything else other than, um, once, you know, those committees are finalized, Steve will work with each committee to, to, uh, figure out what kind of schedule works best for, for those committees. One of the committees may be more of an afternoon thing, one of the committees might always be an, uh, evening thing, whatever works best for the city, so.
So other than having the committees and the contracts ready to go by the November meeting, what else should we be prepared for Kurt or Gail?
There, nothing on my end, if, if I have anything that, that, uh, when I visit with Steve this week, I will shoot it up. You Christina, you can distribute, um, so Gail, is there anything on your end?
I was just gonna emphasize that we're, um, you're doing bonding and then you're gonna change it over to a, a community facility bond through real development when you're done. And I was just wondering if anybody is working on, uh, getting that finalized with RD? Or if I need to jump in with that part of it?
Todd, Gail, I believe Todd has been working with USDA right now.
Okay.
Um, because the, when the council had the public hearing, they approved a preliminary resolution allowing him to begin it, uh, with the waiting period in mind for any, uh, petitions otherwise. Uh, I'll try to make sure Todd is on the work session or on the next council meeting, if not as much notes as I can by then, uh, if he can't attend on November ninth.
Okay, that was, that was my thoughts.
Okay. Um, had one more question Kurt. Oh, I guess getting back to Max's one question is, what, in a perfect world, everything goes well, are we looking at a construction date of twenty-one?
Um, architecture is a little out of my realm, but I would say in general, I'm always surprised how fast the documents can go, especially if there's a clear vision on the programming of the building. So it to me feels like, uh, it should be now, um, having RD involved on a civil project tends to stretch that out, but I don't think in, uh, facilities, it's really, um, it does much as far as extra review time and that, and that type of thing. So I would be surprised if, um, that we're not bidding and, and, and doing some work next, next summer, maybe late summer.
And the reason it pushes it back is just the paperwork Kurt?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not as familiar with, is it, is it community facilities that will be ultimately, um, funding it Gail, after this, after the bond in using RD, is that community facilities dollars?
Yeah, it will be, and they can do it, what they did was a temporary bond and they did it, uh, by judging how much, um, debt capacity the city had and how much, how much was wise to do, and so that's where they came up with the last number.
Okay.
Like setting, setting the piggy bank, this is how much of piggy bank you have, but the temporary bond will go through first. And that's a little lower interest rate and that can, that can take about up to two years to take out, but it'll just be a smooth takeout with the world development. I think it'll go fairly quickly, like you said.
Yeah, okay, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak too much on Steve on, on timing of certain elements. Um, but I think, I think you might be surprised at how quickly it goes.
Thanks Kurt.
Yep.
Y'all have any other questions for Gail or Kurt?
None here.
So I'll reach out to Stephen and ask him to, uh, make sure he's on the November ninth meeting too.
Sure, I'll see him in the morning too, so I'll give him a heads up.
Okay, sounds good.
So, is there anything else to stay on the line for Christina later in the agenda for me?
Um, nope, not that I can think.
All right, sounds good, and I'll probably come on the ninth as well with Steve, so. Unless I'm, unless I'm tracking a deer or something.
Okay, so we'll see ya.
All right, guys, have a, have a good evening.
All right, thank you for being on.
Bye.
Bye now, thank you Christina.
Thanks Gail, we'll be in touch.
Okay, bye now.
So on to the golf course shed.
Um, so I apologize that it's just still on old business, um, from what I can report since the last council meeting or the last work session. Uh, overall, everything is done, um, might be waiting for a little bit of billings in from some grass seed from the co-op. But, uh, my understanding is, is everything on the exterior is now finished. Um, and we caught it just, just in time, um, the city guys brought in a lot of black dirt and, um, the volunteers from the league, from the men's league finished up the seeding. Um, and Jim put some seed down too, so it looks like, um, we're pretty much done. My hope, um, at the November ninth meeting was to have, uh, a final budget, uh, of costs to report to the council of, as to where it was. So that in two thousand twenty-one, when we do the golf budget, I can get a, a true, um, debt, um, payment of what the golf will ha- golf course will have to pay for, for that cart shed in two thousand twenty-one. Anybody have any questions?
And that payment will be once a year?
Yeah, it'll work like every debt payment that the city has to do, including the golf course. Jason, typically the principal and interest payments are half of the interest is due in February. And then a second interest payment is due in August, so it would work like the other two bond, uh, debt, debts that the golf course currently has. I gotta look back at the resolution as to when we, uh, when it actually agreed to start that debt ratio, if it was twenty-one or twenty-two. I wanna say it was twenty-one, but I do apologize, I don't have that document with me.
Okay, so then we're, did we get the, uh, lines blown out out there, is that?
Um, it's my understanding that Jim and Mike were gonna be working on that this week.
The compressor will be here on Friday and we'll go out and give Jim a hand.
You're a great guy.
Can those plastic lines wait that long and with the below the thirty degree weather?
Which lines are we talking about, golf course or the campground?
Golf course, well, are they all plastic lines?
Uh, that's, that's Jim's baby there, he wanted to wait, I, I don't know what they're, you know, I'm not sure exactly what all is in the ground out there, but I would assume he, he should know.
Okay, thank you Mike.
Yep, no problem.
Any word on the, uh, trucks Mike? Since we're down that far.
Yeah, I talked to, uh, Bob over at the dealership just the other day. Um, it sounds like they have narrowed it down now, our trucks are being built on November second. Um, kinda sounds like the date of build, I mean, they're done that day. Um, and then it'll just be a matter of getting them shipped over to the dealership. And then from there, they've gotta go over to, uh, United Truck Body and get fitted for the plows and, uh, accessories and whatnot. So I, uh, kinda guess in mid-November, we should be able to pick them up. A little bit later than I was anticipating, but you know, the, the plants and all that, they were shut down because of the COVID garbage for a while too, so everybody's kinda dealing with that, so.
Very good. Hopefully the most of it holds off.
That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, okay, any other questions for Mike on the trucks? And we're onto the council vacancy.
Sorry Max, I did have one question. Um, Mike, are, are we gonna have them all decal and stuff before we pick them up, or is that gonna be later on in the year?
Uh, that'll be something that we'll have to do ourselves Jason. Um, and when we do that, we'll also do, uh, a decal at the same time for the big plow truck that we bought. So we'll do all, everything all at once and get it done. I don't know exactly when at this point, but we'll have it done before too long, once we get them.
Okay, uh, so we're not, with us being the city entity, we're not required to have the DOT sticker on the big trucks? Or it's just gonna be, or I'm sorry, on the smaller trucks, it's just gonna be the bigger trucks if we need that decal, correct?
Right, we've got a DOT tag, I've already had the big truck DOTed for the year. So that tag is on the windshield up there, um, the pickups, I don't believe we need to have DOTed for any reason, but I can look into that further if you want.
I just wanna make sure that we're within compliance is all, thank you.
Yep.
Very good. Anybody, got anybody else for the council yet?
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of, Max. It'll be up to your, up to your municipal election at this point.
Well, everybody, everybody knows right in Nick, so that's, that's one. Uh, any other word Mike on the hot water?
You know, I haven't heard anything back from Bruce yet, um, I'm guessing, I'm guessing at this point that, you know, he knows just like the rest of us that nothing's gonna get done until next year anyway, so I would assume he's just kinda taking his time, trying to plan it out, make sure everything's the right way. You know, like he said, this will be the, if we do go forward with it, this will be the first one in the county, so I'm guessing he's just taking his time, trying to make sure everything is done right.
Max, would you prefer me keeping that off of the old business on the work sessions until we hear from the county?
No, cuz I don't want it to get forgotten.
Okay, that's kinda how I feel about it too, but I just, I'm be sure.
I, I, yeah, I don't want that one to get forgotten, I think that's a real opportunity. And, uh, Christina, I'll let you give the CARES funding update.
Okay, so just real briefly, um, Sheldon and I met with Antonio and Ryan Zemec last Thursday morning, um, in regards to the Black Duck, um, economic assistance. Uh, we approved three, um, grants, one to, uh, All About You Salon and Tanning, one to the Hungry Duck Restaurant and one to the Black Duck Theater. And then that still gave, um, us a little bit of the twenty thousand left over, so Antonio sent out another press release. Um, hopefully it'll be in this weekend's paper too, for one more week until October thirtieth, for any other businesses to apply one more time to, uh, use up all of that twenty thousand. Um, I did receive a nice email back from the owners of the theater, they were e- extremely appreciative of the grant. Um, and, uh, uh, so that was some nice, some nice feedback. Um, I don't have final numbers for the council to look at of the total CARES funding that the city has received, but I can tell you the last report I sent to the state after the work, after the last council meeting, we had just around six thousand dollars left out of the CARES funding. Um, but provided with some of the recent, uh, COVID scares in the staff, myself included, um, there's gonna be some payroll protection that, that money is gonna be absorbed with. So, uh, what I can report to the council is it looks like, um, the, the city will use every, every penny that the, that the state provided for us. Anybody have any questions?
Sounds good, actually, glad we used it. Um, onto new business, if everyone's ready. Um, I think for right now, we can just, well, we'll talk about it anyway, the library deck. I know they want to, you know, there's a couple areas of the ramp that are getting spongy and I know we're gonna have to put some money into it. And the back deck is, it looks like it's riding a wave. But, uh, I, I don't think we're gonna get to it, I know we're not gonna get to it this year, so, I mean Christina, if we wanted to, we could, I would move that we table this.
Okay. Um, is it something that we need to at least find out from the library or and discuss with the library board as to if it needs to be fully replaced? Because if that's the case, we're gonna need designs, an idea of what needs to be replaced, if it's gonna get ripped out and replaced with something different and what kind of a budget it needs.
Well, you see, and that's where I'm kinda thinking this is gonna become a bigger can of worms and maybe we really wanna open at the moment? I mean, once you put in that ADA and cuz I'll tell you right now, there's no way that that thing is handicap accessible.
The ramp to the front door?
No, the ramp to the front, I'm not worried about that one so much, it's in that back deck.
Oh.
That was an addition, that was something that, that was built by, I'm probably, I'm guessing volunteers. Back thirty years ago or so, and, or maybe not that long, but and the city granted them permission to do it, so now it's our baby.
Sure.
Isn't that fun how that works out all the time?
So let me just make sure I understand this, it's prime, primarily the rear. So let me just make sure I understand this. It's prime, primarily the rear deck that needs attention, not the front to the front door?
Well, it's, they both need attention, but primarily the back one is the, is gonna be the big project, yes.
Okay.
How often does that back deck get used in the winter time?
I'd guess next to never.
So wouldn't it be a little smarter to deal with the front?
Is the back still considered emergency exit though?
You know, Nick, that's a great question and brings up the, my next point was that since that railing is sitting right outside that door as an emergency exit, that's probably a violation right there, the way that they have it built. So that's where I say if, if we're gonna talk about this or do something with this, this is gonna there's actually a library board meeting tomorrow. I will be attending. And I will make it a try to make it a point that they that they understand that when we do this, it's gonna have to be done one hundred percent up to.
Yeah. Maybe you, maybe we should crash that bridge first before we start diving into it then.
I, I agree completely because once, once you make an official deal on this, this year, that back deck, no, we're not gonna have any problems with. But like Nick said, it's a, it is an emergency exit and it is directly out onto it's a walkway and I can tell you that's not a way that that would be, you can't have a railing two feet outside the door.
Right.
Emergency exit, I'm willing to bet. But I will meet with them tomorrow and get a final kind of idea what we're, what they want to do. Otherwise it'd be, I'm not, you'd be tearing it off and getting rid of it. But now what Sheldon said too, the dealing with the front of the, it has a little spongy spot. I don't know, maybe the week can take a look at that sometime in the near future.
When you say spongy spot, Max, is it one board, two boards, three boards? Is it one of the stringers?
It's right in the corner, Mike. I couldn't tell you for sure if it's one of the stringers in the ramp. It's right on that ninety right there.
Of the ramp itself? So as you go up the first part and then you ninety and go up the second part?
Correct, sir. That first ninety.
Good. We'll take a look at it tomorrow.
That's about all we can.
If it's just a couple of boards or something, you know, if the stringer's fine, it's a couple of boards. That's easy enough to pop those out and drop a couple new ones in quick. If it's a stringer, well, then we got a little bit bigger problems, but we can come up with something to at least get us through, uh, the winter time until we decide what we're gonna do.
All right. So if we could keep that one, oh, I don't know. It doesn't have to sit there the whole time either as old business, but.
Hey, Max. Oh, no worries. If that deck is really, really bad, is there any way we could just like screw down some OSB or plywood just to get us through the winter?
I think so.
We'll do whatever we gotta do to make it work for the winter.
I'm gonna trust you with that one, sir. And on to B. Um, I was talking with Sheldon. And he had an idea that maybe we should just leave these resolutions alone until after the the appointments alone until after the election. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Valid point, because otherwise we're just gonna be redoing it again in a couple of months.
Right, that's what I was thinking when I, we come up with that idea.
And I do apologize to the board and those that are viewing this, but I did not have access to the one that was approved at the last meeting. So the vice mayor is Phil, that is Jason. And there was some other things that I know we changed, but I just don't have access to that. So I, I agree with the council that at this point for a timing standpoint, it may be easier for us to just for the city, just to leave it the way it is at this point.
I'd like to be put on the Public Safety Committee if possible.
I think you were.
I thought we did that.
That's, I thought, I thought we had talked about it too, but just looking at this, I see I'm not on there, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, uh, Mike, just to your point, this was the document that was provided to the council to discuss and approve at the last meeting. And then after it was done, I wrote them in, but I just didn't have access to anything.
Okay.
As for this agenda. So yes, you are correct. You were put on the Public Safety Committee.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Hey Christina, um, is there any way you can contact IT and get a VPN set up so you can remote into your computer if you ever need to get into your computer from home again?
Um, I can, and I actually have the ability to, but my, at this point, but my computer has to be on as well. So I can, I can ask IT if that is something that they can push through.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Yep.
Don't worry, we can bother you all the time.
Well, that's okay.
Uh, this next one, I, I think is a pretty good, uh, pretty big importance.
The sales tax portion.
Correct. I hope everybody had a chance to take a look at that, read it, so we know what we're doing.
I couldn't get into it.
Okay.
I want to open.
I apologize. Um.
Yeah, I'm there with Sheldon. I didn't have the correct, uh, access for it as well.
Dang, I'm so sorry, you guys. Doesn't look like it's even pulling up online either. Um, I pulled it right off the League of Minnesota Cities website. They did send an update, uh, just kind of a reminder. Uh, maybe I'll have to send the link to the council on a later date. Basically what it is, is it's just an update and a reminder for everybody that in two thousand nineteen, the, the process for the local sales tax approval process had changed. Um, those that are, those of you that were on the board back in the first part, first quarter of this year may remember that I did report and a work session that we missed our window for two thousand twenties referendum for this election because of this change that happened in two thousand nineteen. That in order to get legislature, legislature approval, um, you had to have a resolution and an approval from your city council into the state by January thirty first of each year. In order for it to be further approved at the next voting or the next general election of your municipality or your governing entity. And what our, what I missed this last year was getting that change, um, to everybody. In prior to that, in the eighteen election, the city approved it first and then it went, excuse me, first it went to the legislature and then it went to the city election and then they flip flopped it in nineteen and I missed that window for us. So the reason I put it on your work session agenda tonight was just to keep it on the radar. I will put a resolution together for the city council to consider before January thirty first of two thousand twenty-one to have that capital improvement plan process for our streets. In the, it would be the twenty-two general election to put that in front of the voters to see if we can get that local sales tax pushed again. But just wanted to let you guys know this cuz I think it's really important, the current council approve it in two thousand twenty. Uh, considering we have some folks on the board that have been part of this for the last two, three years, I would really encourage the council to to approve something like this, this year, so that next year it's ready to go for the, for our state.
Okay.
I guess, Max, did Sheldon or Nick have any questions about the process? I tried to summarize it as easy as possible.
No, I don't. Neither do I. Wondering, we're gonna be able to get it in this January, right?
So you would need to have city authorization first and then it goes to your state legislators to be able to let, they would have to approve it before it can go on the next general elections ballot, Sheldon. So it wouldn't get voted on by the, by the, by the city until two thousand twenty-two. But in order for it to even get to that point, it needs to go through um, the city council as a resolution first and then your state legislators to approve second before it can even become a referendum. So we have some, we have a timeline and some hoops to jump through in order to get that process. So if the city still wants it, we want to start that process this time now. This winter.
Was there a real reason why they had to bring the or the state wants to be so involved after they had given out permission to do it?
Um, the state always had to approve it before it got on the ballot and that was because it's a sales tax.
Okay, so it's, it's not something that's and well, I guess it is new, but not really.
It's just the process changed before. It used to be the opposite direction, the opposite order and now, um, and now the legislature warrants first approval. The way I understood it into, in the updates from two thousand nineteen is that they thought that this would speed the process forward more than the other way around. Prior to that, you were being, you're waiting a whole nother year for it to get on, on on their agendas to consider. And provided how many times they had a special session this year, you know, there were, there were some cities still waiting for theirs this year to get approved. They were, they were cutting it really close to the general election to even have it on the ballot.
I think that by them setting that deadline of January thirty first is, I think they're trying to say that it's gonna be a faster process, but like you said, there's still cities waiting.
Correct.
And that's every, what is it? Every two years?
Yes.
For that process?
Yeah, for our city, it would be every two years that we have a general election.
Okay.
Nothing further on that, I don't think, huh?
Well, I'm good. I just wanna make sure we get our shot at it. Uh, anyway. Uh, what's the Black Duck ordinance for beer, wine and liquor licensing?
So I put this on the agenda, you guys, for some conversation. I had a, um, had a brief conversation with Patrick Chapke, oh, a few weeks ago. You may know that we're one of probably the last states that have three-two, three-two beer out there still. Um, and that's, that's gonna go away really soon. And the way our city ordinance is writ, written right now, bowling alleys can only apply for a three-two liquor license through our city. Um, I researched the current statute to see if anything had changed for bowling alleys. And I ran it through Joe Langle too, because we may, as a city, want to consider opening that up. And altering our ordinance so that if three-two goes away completely, your bowling alley can still have an on-sale license. Because if it, if it goes away completely and we don't, he's not gonna be able to do anything except a full intoxicating license. And that's pretty much how our ordinance goes. It goes from a three-two and a wine license and then jumps to an intoxicating license. And the city has the right to, um, uh, issue a, a number of on-sale intoxicating liquor licenses. But the way it's written right now, bowling alleys aren't included in that. And Joe says that the statute does allow cities to issue on-sale intoxicating liquor licenses to bowling alleys as long as all the other requirements are met. And I wonder how the council feels about updating the city's ordinance to accommodate that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, in order to get the intoxicating license there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of loopholes, like I'm pretty sure there's, um, liability insurance that he's gonna have to pay. That's gonna be a substantial amount more than what he's current and for three-two.
You are correct. Um, in addition to that, uh, obviously as category two, uh, um, food license or category one, food license still has to be in compliance with the Department of Health, which it is. But, um, it will cost him more money. The city has the right to set what that on-sale license will be, but right now bowling alleys aren't included in that. And that's why I wonder if, how you guys feel about updating it to anything that might happen for those people. I mean, I
Is this something Pat, I'm sorry, interrupt you Christina, but is this something Pat is interested? Is it something he wants us to do?
Uh, I'm not, he didn't physically ask for it. He asked what other options he had. Um, that's why I went ahead and looked and compared our city ordinance to the state statute to see if there was any updates. Um, and to see if there's any differences and, uh, because that's, it just narrows down what he can have as an option for his, for his customers.
Christina, do you, do you, uh, know if his view on his hard liquor has changed? Because I know he's, a couple of years ago, he was very adamant, he does not want to sell hard liquor.
It has not changed, Jason, no, but he would like to at least still have beer and wine.
Stronger beer.
Right, and we don't, as an ordinance, we don't have anything in between that right now in our ordinance. We have the three-two and then, and a wine license and then we have, and then we have the intoxicating license.
So is the, the stronger beer, is there any way we could still do it under a different class and so he doesn't have to pay the higher fees or have the higher regulations that he's gonna need?
Yes, the city has the right to make another, uh, level, if you will, of a license for just strong beer and wine, and that would be it and not include hard alcohol.
Okay, good.
Well, then I'd be in favor of doing something like that. How many years has three-two been going away now anyway?
That's a really good question. But I, but I do know that, um, even Jody Treat at the county has proposed this roadblock to the commissioners too, that, um, it is, you know, there's, they still accommodate three-two licenses for other entities inside Beltrami County, including our municipal golf course. Um, but even they know that very, very soon Minnesota is gonna have to switch. I was kind of hoping Shonda would be on the, the call tonight. I would like, cuz she's, she's, um, uh, you know, as part of MMBA, she's really in on that three-two portion of it and that's, I'd like some conversation of that in order to see if, how much that could take away from our, our municipal liquor store too, but.
Max, Max, to your question, I think Christina can answer this as well, but the, the three-two has gone away from a lot of beers that, uh, Patrick could, could be potentially selling right now.
Thanks, Jason. You're right. I think there's one vendor in particular that, uh, that even the city uses that does not even do three-two anymore. I want to say it's, I want to say it's Burnix. So there's a lot of distributors that are not, not moving it at all right now.
So if we do move forwards, uh, he would, he would need to reapply for the first of the year?
He has to anyway for a three-two license, Jason. Um, so if the city wanted to update the ordinance, I'd have to get moving on a, on an update, and we'd have to have a public. Uh, we'd have to have two readings of the ordinance to update it. And get it done so that he could apply for that by January one. Worst case scenario, if the city didn't have it done by then, he can, if he chose to, he could. Apply for the three-two license, have that issued. For two thousand twenty-one, and then if he chose to go away with this three-two license, he could. Apply for the strong beer and wine, if that's what we're gonna call it, at a later time in two thousand twenty-one.
The city wants to move forwards, I would suggest that we would, uh, start this sooner than later.
Yes, I would second that.
Third. Yeah, I think it's a, go for it.
Okay, I'll start working with Joe Langle as soon as I get back in. Um, and looking at our ordinance and seeing how we can get that language in there. The other thing that the council will have to decide at some point is what, um, what the fee will be. Um, so once I get that started, I will, uh, I'll bring that to the council. And then hopefully we'll be able to include it in our fees and, uh, fines and fees, uh, listing for two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. Oh, and on that note, Christina, when, you said when you get back in. Uh, just real quick, that's going to, if you wanna tell the rest of the council. Kind of a idea plan here.
Certainly, I'd be happy to. Um, I plan, I can be back into the office on Wednesday. Um, the plan that Paige and I have is that although the, the building will still be closed to the public. At this time, Wednesday, when we come in, we're gonna do a deep clean of City Hall. I have a huge heightened uh, concern for our election in two weeks. So I really wanna make sure that our, our public is safe, so that people can come in and vote in person. So we're gonna, uh, we've, uh, Paige has picked up some cleaning products. And the two of us are gonna clean everything we possibly can, can come across. Um, I would still prefer to leave City Hall closed. To the end of the month, if there's no objections, at a minimum to the end of this week. But after Tuesday, I can be back into the public. And I can still, I can be back in, in the building, working.
You said Wednesday, you guys are gonna come back and clean. Um, does Mike feel comfortable? Being able to come in and out of the building and into his workspace, okay with that?
I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be here.
Okay.
I'm, I'm.
You're currently there, that's why I'm asking if, if it's okay with you. Because if not, we need to make sure that you feel comfortable and we're not violating your rights by you going into a dirty area.
Well, th- this whole thing's just been kinda messy. But uh, knowing that, and I've talked to Christina about it, knowing that her and Paige are coming back on Wednesday. Um, I plan to stay out of the office and work in the field Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Just to be on the safe side for myself and for my family.
And, and to Mike's point, just so that the council understands, I've, I've spoken with a few people that understand how long this. This can live on surfaces. No one's touched any of our workstations since I closed City Hall. So as long as there's no contact in that point, I've had that air cleaner on that front counter going twenty-four-seven since I bought it. Um, there's, I, I think the, the caution I took when I locked City Hall out to the public was probably a good one. Um, I feel pretty confident that I have not run the risk of anything getting past the two of us. Time will tell, but that's, that, that's the best I can tell everybody at this point. But um, Mike and I had conversations about that, and he knew that staying out of City Hall was his best. Uh, best objective, and if at best, he could go into his office and that was it.
I'm just glad that it's, you know, if we keep it closed, just to make sure that our elections go off without a hitch in person. Everybody gets to vote, that wants to vote. That's the big deal.
Right.
I think we've done that.
Yeah, I would definitely agree, Christina. You're doing an amazing job.
Thank you, Jason. That means a lot.
Uh, onto our police department.
So I know Jace is not on the call, um, and I know that there's been a lot of questions about um, this on the agenda. So I just want to, uh, I, first of all, I wanna assure the council that this was not done. Um, out of any secrecy. Um, the reason for the delay on this was primarily because. Andy had not had an official, um. Had not had an official offer from this other department until most recent. So when we came across the conversation we just got done having. It kinda put some delay in everything. Jace wanted to start looking and starting making an eligibility list for more part-timers regardless. And had very long conversations with, um, Andy in this process while he was. Um, looking at another department. And although it wasn't official at that point, Andy understood that it was most likely gonna happen, and he gave. He gave Jace the okay, if you will, to go ahead and start listing his position. Um, even though he hadn't officially given his two weeks and gotten the other job yet. He just knew that there was some other personal things that were keeping him from being able to do that. It is, it is official. Um, his last day is the twenty-third. He is, uh, going to be moving up to, uh, what? I think it's, it's either Rose Door or War Road. Oh geez. Either way, it's up north. Um, very sad to see him go. Rose, oh, thank you. Very sad to see him go. Um, but he's moving his, his, um, his girlfriend and his soon-to-be daughter. Um, and they're starting a new life up there, and I wish them well. So we, uh, move forward with putting a public posting out there so that we could start getting. Some hopeful applicants for, um, filling his, by, filling the state.
Yeah, good for Andy. Um, the only, the only concern that I had with this issue was, is that I read it in the paper before I got. Or before council got informed, and I was just wanting to know, why is that, um, is that gonna be our new? Process from now on?
I don't think that was deliberate, Jason. I think it was just a timing issue. Um, again, as I stated earlier, Jace had no idea if it was official as of the last council meeting even. Um, it was a few days later. In that week, I believe that, uh, Jace had asked me to make the posting. So, um. Not putting anything on Jace because he's not here to speak for himself. Um, if he chose to be able to tell everybody in a full council, he probably, it would have been a, um. A good decision at that point. He didn't ask me to do that at either. Um, but again, it was kind of a bad timing stamp it when it came to that, plus everything that happened that week with the COVID scare. And uh, um, for those of you that know that Jace has been out as well. I don't know if that answers your question, Jason, or not, but I'm trying.
No, I, I totally understand it. It's just that, uh, with the issue of us potentially leaving an officer. And I totally understand, you know, the whole issue, what's going on, you guys' personal and business life is just. I just felt that it was really, really wrong for not having any of the council informed before you inform the public of what's going on with a. One of our police officers, that's all. But again, I totally understand.
Okay. Duly noted.
Have we had any applicants?
Uh, if we have, I haven't seen anything electronically as of yet, Max. Um, there could be something in the mail. I don't know at this point.
So, just a standard operating procedure question.
Okay, understood.
Um, does, uh, since this is kind of a weird one. Does anybody have anything, anything that they'd like to bring up before we're done here?
I just wanna make a quick point, quick, uh, about, uh, streetlights. I know Jason's kinda been wondering. They finally showed up, Jason. So I'm waiting to hear back from, uh, Todavich. They were gonna kinda check their schedule and see when they can get around. Um, we, I also sent, uh, Tim Freeman down today to the state shop. And we got a new pole for, uh, that Highway seventy-one, Lake Road intersection there. Um, Todavich is gonna help us with that as well. Uh, they've got a crew that recently put quite a few up over in Bagley. During their road construction, so they know what they're doing, how to kinda straighten out that, uh, screw-in base. Cause you gotta pull the wire out first, get it down and run the wire back up through a bunch of stuff, basically. Just to make it simple for you. Um, so hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll have, uh, some new streetlight heads up. Uh, the plan was to do three on Liberty and three on Oscar. Um, however, that might change a little bit, uh, being that we had the one knocked down. So I think we're gonna do three on Liberty, two on Oscar, and then the one new head will have to go up at, uh. The really busy intersection over there that really needs the light.
Okay, Mike, um, if you need to, Liberty does have two working ones, one on each end. It's just the middle one that's not working. And also, are the lights supposed to stay on all night long? Are they supposed to flicker off and flicker on throughout the night?
They should be on all night long.
Okay, so then the one towards, um, Maine and Liberty, that's gonna be a bad light, I'm assuming then, cause that one comes on and off. So if you need to, we could get rid of the one that's towards the, um, the highway, cause that one's constantly on, and that one does work.
Well, what we'll do, the, the easiest thing, Jason, up there is just to redo those three all at the same time. So we'll knock those three out, and then, uh, down, like I said, on Oscar there, instead of putting three up, we'll put two for sure. However, um, this one that was knocked down by Timberline. I'm gonna try, and I don't know that it's gonna work for sure, but I'm gonna try to kinda scrape and salvage some parts out of that one. Plus, we've got two other bad ones in our shop. I'm hoping to maybe put one together. If I can do that, then we'll do three on Oscar, three on Liberty, and the one by Timberline.
Cool, thanks, Mike.
Yep, no problem.
Mike, could I just add something to your street lighting update?
Yep.
Just so the council knows, there's been a bunch of historical issues with these MinDOT lights. Um, Mike and I have been involved in MinDOT, and we, we understand what's going on. Um, there's always been this issue of, well, they're on a, a state highway, so we don't own them. And the state's like, no, they're inside your city, so you own them, and, and it is the case. It doesn't matter. Um, it happens in every, in every city. MinDOT will put the lights up, but we are responsible for them. So two things I just wanna inform the council on is, going forward, I've got, um. I've got insurance from the League of Minnesota Cities and property on the, in, yeah, in a clause called property in the open. And the streetlights inside the city are included in that. I have included the MinDOT lights going forward on that. Um, schedule now, so if this happens again, will be covered. But as it sits for just this particular one that Mike is working on getting replaced. That was obviously a moving violation, so there's insurance of the, um, of the issue from the vehicle. That when that light came down, that's, that person's insurance is gonna be covering it. So we should see a wash on that cost for us. Also, MinDOT's been really great. They're, they actually gave us a light pole. Um, that they had in their field or whatever. So the, the light pole itself isn't costing us anything except its erection and then the, and the fixture.
Yeah, they were, you know, I went back and forth on this deal with this streetlight, and it's drove me nuts since it started. But, uh, the, the state did graciously enough give us a pole. It's a used pole. But it looks just as good as any other pole, from what I can tell. You know, we had to pay to have it picked up and brought up here, but like Christina said, I mean, we're really nothing into it. And beyond that, we're just gonna pass that cost along to, uh, the owner of the light pole, so.
Yeah.
So it's, it's coming along. I know it's been a little while. It's been quite a bit longer than I had hoped, but we're getting there on it finally.
Yeah, we just had to figure out the, the logistics and the ownership that was a back and forth constantly.
Yeah, going forward now, there's, uh, the two at that intersection, um, two up by the Dollar General. Uh, one up on the very north end of Maine, where it comes back out on to seventy-two. And then there's, uh, the one, there's two. I guess one of them's kinda by Liberty and seventy-one, and one of them would be by Fourth Street and seventy-one. Those are all the ones that the state, excuse me, the state put up, but we're responsible for now.
There's also one, as you pull on the main down by Forestry too.
There is, yes, that's correct.
And I think there's one on the intersection of Maine and seventy-one by Bulgarts.
Yeah, there's the two right there.
Yep, so I, I kinda counted them, and I provided to the League of Minnesota Cities a, a head count of lights, so that they knew they could add it to our schedule.
There's quite a few. That I really thought should have been the state's issue, um, but going forward, if we have this problem again. There won't be such a time delay now that I've argued and I've been through it, and I just know we're, we're not gonna come out. The winning end of that.
Right.
One last thing, sorry, guys, just as long as we're on the streetlight deal. Um, I did notice that now that it's started to get colder again, we did talk about the streetlights over along the frontage road. And I see that the cable must have stretched and it's out again. So just so we know where we're sitting on that, that's just, at this point, probably gonna have to wait until spring. And we'll just, we're gonna dig it up and put a whole new line, probably from Summit all the way to BFF. And just be done with it, cause I got a feeling this is gonna keep happening to us otherwise.
All right.
Right.
We know where we're at with it, at least.
I was hoping after we passed it together that it would hold, but evidently not.
Okay. Uh, with that, um, our next meeting, November ninth, or, excuse me, yeah, November.
November ninth, um, if I could, Max, I just wanted to share. I, I only have one concern about our November ninth meeting, and that's with, um, how I stated earlier with the. Um, certification of the election. Uh, I did schedule that for the council to approve on that night. Uh, the only thing that could potentially hold that up is the certification of the absentee ballots. At the county level, provided, um, the unusual circumstances of this year's election. The county actually has a little bit longer than normal to certify, um, all those absentee ballots coming in this year. It may or may not affect our count on our election on November ninth. I'm waiting to hear back from Jody Treat if she. I'm waiting to hear back from Jody Treat if she feels as though November ninth is too early for us to certify the election. If that is the case, I may be pushing that off a couple of days. It's, it's kind of gonna be up to, um. It's gonna get, kind of be up to that point, because I have no idea how many absentee ballots have gone in for our government. Um, if it affects the election at all, because what I see the night of the election is obviously all the write-ins. And all the, all the votes for, um, the elected officials that actually filed for. A position, but I don't get to see the night of the election, any of those absentee ballots. Until the county sends it to me after they certify, so there might be a little bit longer, so. I guess what I'm telling you is hang tight. November ninth might not be the night that we certify the Black Duck election.
Okay, we wouldn't need to call a special meeting for that, would we?
Uh, we would, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just keep that on your radar, guys.
By, by law, it is supposed to be within ten days of the election.
Okay.
Right, the ninth is only six days from the general election, so. The city could potentially do it on like that Thursday of that week too, but again, it would be kind of like our last public hearing. Or, excuse me, when you certified the, um, preliminary levy, Max, it could be in, in and out. It's just, I don't know where how mu- how many people have voted absentee in, in the precinct.
Okay. I would, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
Well, second.
Motion to adjourn.
Third motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Jason, aye.
Max, aye.
That, good night.
Nick, aye.
Thanks, Nick.
Go. Uh, with that, we are adjourned. Thank.